Okay, I'm gonna call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order. Today's May 28, 2015 at 7:01 PM. We have on the agenda, first item will be the approval of the agenda. I believe everybody has minute, the minutes for April 23. We need to sort those, then we have a public hearing. We have a public hearing for the Parker Woods Drive expansion. Then we have a pending application, which is the Parker Woods Drive expansion application. Then we have new applications, Ledgewood Meadows subdivision, preliminary subdivision application, and the Lovejoy subdivision, subdivision pre-application. And then we will hear from the planner about all kinds of things, I'm sure. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, agree?
I mean, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion, anybody wants to add? Here we go, none, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Next item, thank you very much, Will Clark.
Paul McGinn, Bob Graham.
Jim Low.
Mark A.
John Durkendrum.
Richard Gahn.
Rod Warren.
Add one more. You're out somewhere.
Present, not present.
You have the, you have the meeting minutes for April 23?
Well, we have, I guess, I have, I have an amendment I'd like to suggest on that.
Okay.
Under the pending applications, DuBois livestock, I would like to have it reflected that I recuse myself from that portion of the hearing. Do you think that would be appropriate to note? As in the butter, right.
Not being passed.
Now, did you note that at the bottom paragraph, it does?
Yep.
Did that?
He excused himself.
Oh, at the bottom paragraph, okay, so it's in there, so I don't need to make a comment. No, I didn't notice that.
Another question?
Yes.
Back, on the back page of 404, under Planner's Report and everything else, I don't ever recall hearing or anything else about Lobster Company DDP permit, residential building permit.
That's correct.
That's something new, it's just in there, we never knew anything about it. Never been presented to us, that information or anything else.
How we know?
Well, there was some discussion on Phil, but it wasn't on Lobster Company.
No, no. That was, that was residential property.
Yeah, it's near it.
No, it's up the street, nowhere near it. Yeah, it wasn't Lobster.
No.
It was actually the property of the Lobster Company. They have residential property.
No, I know it's not on the Lobster property, I'm just saying, we may have been mentioned in.
I'll just take that line out.
But it's not, no, it's incorrect reference that.
I just remove the whole line now.
Okay, so we should probably have a motion to accept it as amended?
Yes.
Mark makes the motion, I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to accept the minutes as amended. Any other discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Todd Lee standing?
Yeah, I was in here.
Okay.
Oh, you were playing, weren't you?
The next item.
You were in Washington, weren't you?
Oh, yeah.
You were playing.
In Washington?
Okay.
Yes, he did.
We have a public hearing, so I'm gonna call a public hearing to order at 7:06. Before we get started, I've been asked to read 11. This is from David and Mary Patricia Adams, 213 Downing Road. It was sent to Mr. Ted Redway, the town planner.
Date?
Date is May 28, 2015. Dear Mr. Redway, two days ago, Tuesday, 26th of May, 2015, I received in the mail a notice of public hearing, a Rundle Planning Board announcing a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, May 28, 2015 today, regarding a proposed private way application to extend Parker Woods Drive. Two days is not a reasonable time to respond since my wife and I have been traveling. For the entire summer of 2014, heavy equipment was operating in the area directly behind our east side property lot, suggesting that Mr. Parker was already beginning construction of this project. I went to Town Hall to inquire about the activity, but no one there could answer my questions. I was told that someone would call me back and I never received a call. After notification of the public hearing, I placed a call on Monday, which was not returned. Since the meeting is tonight, I am submitting my concern in writing. My neighbor Dale Mallory will be present at the hearing and will offer some comments on the proposed project. I would simply like to refer to the land use ordinance, section 7.7.1.2.4, which states that discharge of concentrated runoff onto an abutting property shall not be permitted unless a drainage easement is granted by the abutter. My wife and I will not be granting a drainage easement particularly since this part of the adjoining land is in the 100-year floodplain. Our travels will get us to a Rundle on June 11, and we can be reached at 207-985-3524 from that time. In the meantime, we can always be reached by cellphone at 512-802-5871. Sincerely yours, David C. Adams and Mary Patricia Adams. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address this? Dale?
Do you mind if I don't stand?
You Dave, yeah, not Dale, yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, I'd like to let Mr. Reed speak first.
Yeah, I, I.
Please identify yourself.
Bruce? Yeah, you can do that.
Thank you, Mark. Bruce Reed, I reside at 220 Downing Road. I am going to let Dale, this is, I was caught the same way that the letter just indicated the Adams were filed, but by surprise, I had no idea, I may not be on the abutter list. I may not be within the radius of the calls for being notified. So I'm here as an interested party across the street, and also I just want to make sure that the Adams, they are upset about this. They're my neighbors, my friends, and I'm attorney, as you all know. I just want to register their presence as an attorney on their behalf. They're here, not only in the letter, but also through me. I will let Dale, as they said in their letter, articulate their specific objections. But I guess from my perspective, I just want to make sure, you know, eyes are jiving, the t's are crossed. That's the only reason I would stand up and say anything personally. The Adams have some other, more specific concerns that Dale can, Dale Mallory can articulate, but it did seem, I'll leave it to Ted to explain to the board and to the public what steps were taken to follow the ordinance requirements regarding notice. Certainly the Adams were the right to have been at the site walk. Apparently that did occur, did you have a site walk?
We did.
Okay.
For the public?
Well, there's a requirement in the ordinance that the public be invited. I don't know what, honestly, I haven't looked carefully at the ordinance, but I just want to make sure Ted at least explains what was done and so the Adams can have some comfort that they either were not notified and therefore really should be afforded the opportunity to be there as the most directly affected abutter, or that you did comply with the ordinance. I would just like to have some response from Ted on that issue.
Okay.
And I guess those are, you know, from my perspective, I just wanted to register my presence on behalf of the Adams and make sure that we're, I know that this is a precursor to building permits coming down the line. That's not before the board was signed. We're curious to know how those building permits run, or if there's not a subdivision plan submitted to this board for approval. Obviously, we all know the rules, every five years, we'll have relative exceptions. We just want to make sure the exception, but that's a question for Ted and for Jim, when and if those building permit applications come up. So that's all I have to say at the moment, I'll let Dale Mallory speak.
Bruce, you sit here.
Excuse me. My name is Dale Mallory, I live at 227 Downing Road. I received a letter, same one I believe Mr. and Mrs. Adams received, and I received it the same day that they received theirs, two days prior to this meeting. Again, not enough time to assess everything, look things over, make sure things were done properly. So I'd like to see if there's a way that we can postpone the vote until the Adams have returned home, because they are the true abutters to the property of Mr. and Mrs. Parker, and they have concerns that they would like voiced in front of the planning board in person themselves.
You yourself are not a director of order?
Director of order, no. May I bring, is that it for now, can I bring up other things?
If it's related to this.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's the only reason I'm here, is related to this. Okay. I have more concern, questions than I do problems with the project. One of the things concerned about are mostly ecological. When my wife and I bought our home, we were told that we were in a 500-year floodplain. We did not need to have flood insurance. Anyone that's familiar with me knows that we were flooded three times in nine years. So someone owes me 1,000 years. I don't know where that's gonna come from, but 1,500 years, and I need to get mine back. And I'm worried about future flooding. We were very lucky this springtime in that we did not have a rain to wash away all that snow that we received in the wintertime. The river did rise, it was into the field in front of my house. I live between, I live on the Kennybunk River, right next to the West Kennybunk, edge of town, the last house in a Rundle on Downing Road. So we were greatly affected by this flood. I'm just wondering about future flooding. I'm also concerned about wetlands impact. That's a, an area back in there, it's swampy and marshy. I'm wondering what kind of septic systems are gonna be accepted into this. I'm concerned about the impact on the Kennybunk River. Runoff from the project, runoff from homes, septic leaking, things like that. One of the reasons my wife moved into that house is because we have just beautiful vistas, and the animals are all over, and I really would hate to see that disrupted by some sort of spillage or something along that line. I'd like to bring up a couple items in the ordinances that I felt were appropriate. If we go to 7.7.1.4A, it says on number two, it says, "No more than two undeveloped existing lots shall be serviced by an exempted private way constructed or reported after June 14, 2000." My knowledge and according to the letter I received, there were four to seven lots going in there. I understand that these lots can be deeded to families since it's a private way construction. The Parkers I know personally, my children play sports with their children. They only have three children. Where are the other four lots going to go? Or whom are they gonna go to? That's a concern of mine. Number three, under the same section. "The width of the existing travel way shall be no less than," it says 15, but if you go to the design standards for a three to seven lot or dwelling unit, that needs to be 18 feet, not 15. Everybody with me? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I check, because I want to make sure this line of questioning, it is, we have to clarify. I think you're in the wrong section.
Okay.
Okay, and I say that just to save time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. An exempted, just as a matter of clarification, exempted private way is a private way that is given an exemption by Frank's Staff Review Committee. And it's a, it's a private way that cannot meet any standards.
Cannot meet any standards at all. Septic water, building codes, none of that?
Let me finish. It, we're dealing with a private way as subdivision, so we're dealing only with the road. And it's really pertaining to existing private ways that have created over time prior to 2010, quite frankly, that are problem locations, where we have houses essentially on them, and the roads cannot meet standards. And we have lots that are existing that are lots of regular people, and paying taxes, but they can't get a building permit because the road needs to be upgraded in order to meet the standards in referring to 7.7.
Okay, it was all, it was all under the.
Exemptions.
No, I mean, the title was under, I was looking at private ways and estate lots, and it was right under that heading, so I assumed it was, it qualified as a, something of question that should be answered, that's why I bring that up.
It's a legitimate question, I just wanted to clarify that that just, that deals, this is, this is an existing. They're upgrading and expanding this road, so they have to meet all the standards that are in the large table that you saw.
Okay, now, I'm very sorry. The existing road is covered in asphalt, correct? Correct, okay. The new road is going to be directly off of that, correct? It's gonna be added to the end of the asphalt and then taken back to where the lots are to be divided up.
Well, they're actually reconstructing the entire road to this.
Okay, they've already been, he's already been doing that. There's been construction going on for that road all spring. This week, there were at least five trucks with Parker on the tour that was bringing dirt into his property, not removing it from. And it's all stacked right along where they've cleared a path, which I assume is going to be the road. I'm assuming that that may be a little premature for him to be doing that. I'm also concerned about the, the ability of fire trucks to be able to pass each other. Is that road going to be wide enough for that to take place? And again, with the cul-de-sac that's gonna be at the end, are they going to be able to make, maneuver around so that they can best serve the community in that area as best possible? The Adams asked me again to bring up the drainage easement. They will definitely not sign an easement for that. And the other thing, Mr. Reed brought up earlier about a site visit. If we go to 7.7.1.4A, Staff Review Committee Approval Process, the next to last sentence says, "The review committee shall conduct an onsite public hearing in which members of the public are invited to attend and comment." I was never notified of this, and the Adams were never notified of this. So again, we need to postpone until at least a walkthrough by the public and explanation of how things are going to go, should progress.
This wasn't a staff review.
I'm sorry.
This was not staff review.
This was not a staff review, Dale.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that it says here that we need.
But you quoted stuff that's not in line with the project. This is not a staff review project. So it was fully reviewed by the planning board process. And the road is not any different, because it's a family subdivision. The road is meeting the same standards as any subdivision.
No, I'm not talking about the standards, I'm talking about that you're already excavating the, the road, and you don't even have approval from the planning board to do anything.
I've been operating as an excavation contractor in the town of Rundle for almost 20 years, and I've been stockpiling material at that property for almost 20 years. I have loom there, I have some gravel there, and you've mentioned five trucks of Parker D-Ma. I own one dump truck.
Okay, well, it's been partner, it's been coming with a full load of dirt at least four to five times a day going into your property.
That must be the same truck that brings you free wood, Dale.
Chairman, excuse me?
I'm not here to tell the planning board how to do your job. My experience with public hearings is the applicant. I honestly don't know, I don't know what you're doing. This is a public hearing, I was expecting to have the applicant, and again, however you want to run your show is fine, but I just want to hear what is being proposed. I would like the applicant to just tell us how wide's the road, how far it's going, what's the drainage. Is Bill here, is he gonna present for you, or are you gonna?
No, I'll present.
Okay. I mean, I just, I have the chance to present, and it's hard to, I just would like to know what he's doing, that's all.
Well, I'm sure you're troubled with.
Hang on just a minute, I need to address something, Dale. You did quote the Staff Review Committee process.
Yes.
But if you look at the next page, at B4B, it talks about the planning board review. This comes to the planning board review. If it were a staff review process, we wouldn't be having this hearing.
All right, under the planning board review, it states that "Within 30 days of receiving a complete private way application, the planning board shall conduct a site walk and a public hearing in which members of the public are invited to attend and comment." Again, I only got two days' notice on this.
This site walk was approved back on April 23, I believe?
There were two, maybe more.
That's true, the first, the first one didn't exist.
But there was actually two site walks.
There were. There was a site walk that was scheduled in early April, that not enough people showed up. On April 23, we scheduled another one. We had the site walk, we had, and there was plenty of notice. There's notice put up on the town website, there's notice posted at Town Hall. I don't know, and, and we have to ask Mr. Redway to arrest the process of how those notices go out.
Okay, because the Adams nor I were notified of this public walk. A nation especially should have been notified, because they are the abutters to the property. And again, I think this needs to be postponed until they are here in the area so that they can voice their opinions and see exactly what's going on. They're very, very concerned about this.
And I think at this point, I'm gonna ask the town planner to explain the process of notifying the public about the hearings and how they work. Because, because that issue has come up, you've asked it, Mr. Reed has asked it. Look for the noise.
Through the chair. The public hearing process is twofold. They have an official public hearing by the planning board. We notify all of the abutters who are those who are within 500 feet, which is why you got a notice. So technically, you're an abutter. Bruce, just missed it.
Okay, yeah.
It's basically, it's 500 feet notifying, well, we can advance. We also put a, and that's a notice that you did receive in the.
I did receive.
And we also do a notice in the newspaper, in the Journal Tribune.
Don't read that paper.
What?
I don't read, I don't read the papers around here, they're no good.
That is, but that, that is our legal requirement to post seven days, we do 10, just to be sure, whatever, sure if it's gonna.
But I never received notice of this public walkthrough.
And you wouldn't, because we don't send those notices.
The Adams did not either, and they're the true abutters. They should definitely have been contacted about this.
But we don't do that as for a site walk, we do that for a public hearing.
Well, it says it was a public, it's a public hearing.
Official public hearing, which we're having right now, that's what we notify, notify abutters. But when we have a site walk and a public incoming comment at the planning board level, that is advertised in, on the town website.
Okay, well.
It's no different than a meeting.
Yeah, did the Staff Review Committee have this onsite, public?
This is not being viewed.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm completely novice in this. I'm just here as a insurance.
Well, we have this two levels, we have two levels of review. We have staff level, which is basically myself, the code enforcement officer, the public office director, and the hardship. And we do that for applications involving, private ways involving less than two lots. This is an application that, quite frankly, involves more than two lots, so it automatically got kicked up to the planning.
Yes.
And because the captain's also looking at potential family division or exempted division as some future date, it's clearly it's in his best interest to do it at this level, otherwise he has to go back and rebuild. So that's why he's doing a subdivision, or not a subdivision.
Yeah, I see.
No, that's the word. No, this is strictly a private way, because the applicant is not asking for the lots that would be approvable by the planning board. Under state law, there are certain, the legislature has provided exemptions, which Bruce alluded to, and that is the exemptions for transfer of property to individual lots to blood relatives.
Yeah, I do understand that.
And also being able to carve out a lot from the main lot every five years. One, carve out every five years, or in the event of probate, or a ruling by, by the courts to buy a land.
Now, as I understand you, then they don't have to have an approved septic system behind the town? They can just dump it right into the Kennybunk River?
No.
Well, I mean, if they don't have a, if they don't have to have an approved septic system, where is it gonna go?
Well, they do have to have an approved septic system, that's not dealt with by this board. It's dealt with by both the state and the code enforcement officer in the town of Rundle.
Okay.
What each individual septic system will have to be done is they'll have to receive an HHE 200, basically, from, and that will be prepared by a licensed site evaluator, who's licensed in the state. It's sent, it's given to the code enforcement officer, who is sent off after he, who is sent off also to the state, open a human engineer. And so that's where that's covered for each individual lot.
Again, I'm just concerned about the, the ecological concerns there, because it's all, it's, there's quite a bit of marshland, there's quite a bit of wetlands there. You have the Kennybunk going right past, I believe, where the cul-de-sac and one of the homes is going, or one of the two of the homes are gonna be. Now, I think there's gonna be some sort of impact on the river by having those lots in that general area.
And that is something that, frankly speaking, if they proceed to give it to blood relatives or carve it out every five years, it is not going to be reviewed by this planning board. It will be reviewed by the code enforcement officer when those lots are done.
Okay.
And also the, the septic systems will be reviewed by both the state and, and the local code enforcement officer. In regards to other issues, no, there will not be a review. But that's the exemption that the legislature has provided, the property owners who proceed to, to do some divisions, that are going the other way. Because they are proceeding that way, and they're not proposing any lots at this point, this board is limited in its review to strictly the private way.
Okay, I'd like to address that, then. Has there been, has there been permission given by the code enforcement officer to allow Mr. Parker to pre-dig this road?
I can't speak to that, I don't know.
Okay, well, that's a, to me, that's a major issue. He's already started, like, he thinks he's already got it in his pocket. You know, I mean, it's, to me, it's a road, it looks just like a road, it goes back behind some pine trees. It's gonna come out by a deer stand that he built, where the cul-de-sac's going to be. I mean, there's trucks bringing in dirt, they're not taking dirt out. So, you know, he may be excavating on his own property, but it looks like he's excavating the road right now. And I think that's a big concern.
There has been a road in there, it says, "Before I bought the property, Dale." It was, as you know, that was an old farm, there was an old road onsite that is showed on the site plan, if you would have reviewed it.
I did.
An existing road and a proposed road.
Yes. Yes.
And there's one on the right, and there's one on the left.
Yep.
And we had permission earlier in the year to re-ditch a ditch line for a culvert that was washed out, and we've actually been removing the old road and moving and seeding in terms of putting in a new road when it gets approved. So we have less than so many acres exposed at one time, which is DDP rules and regulations.
Okay. I still think he's already started construction, and I don't think he's got the approval to do that. That's my opinion, and from what I've seen. Okay? And I think that's, that's about, I think that was all I had. I thank you very much to the board for allowing me time to express my opinions and my concerns. Again, I'm not against the project, I just have questions and concern about how things are gonna progress. Thank you all very much for your time, I greatly appreciate it.
Troy?
And again, Dale, I just want to explain to Mr. Reed, this project, even though we keep talking about it as a family subdivision, it's still...
It's not a subdivision.
It's a... Okay, I'm talking right now about it. It still had to meet all the same requirements. One of the requirements in town right now is you can't have lots of four acres.
You can't have what now? I'm sorry, I have...
You can't have any large lots.
Large lots.
It just needs to be...
Over, I mean, what's considered a large lot?
You can't have a five acre lot.
Okay, I didn't know.
By subdivision standards in the town of Arundel. And the works have maybe possibly changed in that. I didn't want one acre lots. I don't think anyone in our neighborhood has a one acre lot, maybe other than you. And my project is downhill view. We had to map out in '01 when I put in the first house lot. There was no hundred-year flood zone mapped out with the USGS. I had to hire an engineer to do that, both sides of the turnpike, fifteen hundred feet, because there was no state data. We did that, which included your property up past Downing Road. Your property is in the flood zone, which means your septic system is being washed into the river. My lots will not, they are not in the hundred-year flood zone, and it was done by an engineer. They're up on high ground, probably thirty feet higher than your house. All engineered, there was no state data, town of Arundel gave me engineer it, the first lot that I put in. So as far as environmentally goes, I will not be impacting the Kennebunk River, will meet all state and local codes and regulations. Your septic system has been flooded, as you mentioned, five times in the past ten years.
No, my septic...
That means your septic does go in the river.
My septic system has not been flooded, my house has been flooded, my septic system is a...
Your house gets flooded, and your septic system's underground, and I guess your septic sewage would too.
My septic is a tank that I pump out every two years.
Not just a tank, it's a bag.
Well...
You can't have just a tank, they haven't done that in years.
Excuse me? They haven't pumped my pump out?
No, everyone has a septic system, not just a tank.
Well, it's been pumped out last year, don't tell me it has been pumped out. I have Mr. Ness come and pump it out every other year.
So we're talking about the tank, okay? Your waste fluids go in the ground.
Yes. As the ground takes care of them.
And they go in the river. I'm not in the hundred-year flood zone, I paid to have it mapped out, and these lots will not be in the hundred-year flood zone.
Well, are there FEMA maps available that says what the flood plains and flood...
I just told you, I paid to have an engineer map out fifteen hundred feet, both sides of the main turnpike.
That's not my question.
Because there was no federal data. We actually paid to have it done and mapped it.
I was under the assumption that FEMA had maps of that area, they just had not been updated to this year. That's what I was told.
FEMA maps are notoriously inaccurate.
Okay, I'm just saying, like I said, when I bought my house in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, we were told it was a five-hundred-year flood plain, and we did not have to have flood insurance.
FEMA maps generally, as I said, are notoriously inaccurate, and we often have actual engineers do field studies to actually pinpoint where those flood plains are. Sometimes they match up a tiny little.
Okay, well, I know the USGS has set up a monitoring station at the bridge on the Arundel side, and they've been monitoring the ride and flow of the river for at least three years, I believe, maybe, maybe four. So there's federal involvement right there. They should have information about flooding and whatnot. If they're, they're there maybe once every three months, and it's got a solar hookup to it, so they can download the information as DP. You know, so as far as I'm concerned, the federal government does have information about that.
For the chair, can I address that? Yes, you're right, federal government does. Current federal maps that we're using are, as Mr. DeKinnon states, are notoriously inaccurate. The federal government hasn't, FEMA hasn't fact gone through, and they have remapped what we call the zone A's, which don't have much data, that's why they're notoriously inaccurate. And that was what caused such a fury in Kennebunk, Arundel, Lyman, Kennebunk port, was because the calculations also included an assumption of a three-foot sea level rise over the next one hundred years. So you can imagine that the amount of floodplain increased significantly in many areas, and properties that currently were not in the floodplain were now designated as being in one hundred-year floodplain. That caused enough of a storm that the federal government drew the maps for a period of time, and they're under review, and in fact, I believe the comment period has ended for that. And we will be publishing those new maps, which I'm not sure how much more accurate they are, but they're certainly more enforceable by FEMA, put it that way. So right now, the new maps are available online, they're just not enforceable at this time, have not been adopted by FEMA.
Is there a normal timeframe that exists between the end of the comments and when they approve the maps? I mean, you probably don't.
Theoretically, yes, but that doesn't...
It's not, it's got public knowledge.
Well, it's when they, yeah, I believe the comment period is closed.
Yes.
And so how long it takes them to integrate those comments into the mapping, there's no statutory requirement for them to respond at a certain period of time. So it could be next year, it could be tomorrow, it could be ten years from now. Would you like Mr. Parker to make the presentation about...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
If you could explain to everybody what's going on.
Well, it's, you know, there's an existing road with two lots on it right now, and it's gonna continue into the backfield and follow an old farm road that was there, and be off in a few places. And it's, I'm doing it purposely right now for one of my sons is ready to build now, and the other ones, when they get ready, but, and it doesn't have to be just your children, it can be Dale's children, or your brother's, sister's, or whoever, but primarily, I bought fifty acres so that I could give a few acres to my children, and that's what this project is doing. Instead of doing it five different times, every time one wants a lot, I'm doing it once, and building a road that meets town standards. Instead of piecemealing it together, we're gonna do the whole thing in one shot.
You have a plan with you?
I do not have a plan with you, Bruce, but Ted does. It's a full, engineered plan by the...
And the board did have some questions, runoff was a big concern, and the board did have some questions for you to run off calculations, and we asked you to look closely at them. And your department, they saw no peak runoff.
That's right.
Well, it showed, it showed...
No net, no net decrease.
Zero, zero increase, right.
And that was all done by engineers.
The whole project has been, evidently, just like any other project in the town would be, it's actually gonna be quite a road for, right now, for one house lot, but that's what needs to be done by these standards.
But, yeah, just to get back to your concern, the board is as concerned as our people here in town with runoff, and where it goes, and what it does, so we're always on top of that. And the first thing is we ask for approval.
Very good, very good.
Let's put it this way, this road that FEMA built will be the best road in town.
That's kind of scary. I think what it needs is probably have more gravel under it than most town roads.
Right. I'm sorry, that's...
It's, the standard is very strange, it's twenty-two feet wide, two feet gravel, I mean... And you're paving it.
Yeah.
And I think for all of the public...
I didn't have, I missed the right presentation.
It's very, it's very important for everybody in the comments, because obviously you all concerned, this has come before the board. We have, I think, done our due diligence in it, but we're talking about the road, and a lot of the road runoff was gonna be created with that, where potentially lots, that all had to be redone as well, and I think they had to reduce the proposed number of where they could go because of some of the sightings that happened. So what we're dealing with is really them building a road at this time.
Which they've already started.
And we can deal with, we can deal with that, I'm at herd.
Okay.
That's a code enforcement issue if it is an issue, that is not the board's issue.
Okay. I think what I'm trying to tell you, Dale, that we're required by this board to meet all the same standards as far as erosion and sanitation control as any other project has the standards required in the town of Arundel.
Yeah, this is, this is Downing Road right here, so I...
Oh, okay.
But if you go on our website, you will see all the videos, the next... You'll hear how this is going over here.
Yes, I was talking with the town planner yesterday, and he was explaining that to me.
If you go right into the website to see videos and videos, this has been a five acre road.
No, I would hope not.
I'm taking back control.
Okay, okay. What we have here is, this is Downing Road, give an explanation. Troy, if you want me to do it, I don't have to do it.
You're good.
This is the Downing Road area here, this is the existing road. Now, this road is being realigned from originally, this was approved in 2006, 2009, and 2008, I think, and several revisions. But the road up to about here was, actually to about here, was approved. Yep. As three lot, vision one, two, and then remainder land. Lot three, which is the Parker home, actually has access from now, but it also enjoys access from this as well, but it's principal access is from here, so it's actually, right now, two lots and the remainder. They're gonna extend this all the way out to near the end of the property. This is the path and thread of Kennebunk River, cul-de-sac, main turnpike, dotted line is the hundred-year flood plain.
Pretty close.
Yeah. They have building windows here, building windows here, building windows all on this side, yeah. And essentially, they've done, it's relatively level, but they've done planar profiles in here, in fact, this section of it has to be redone, not only because of width, but also because of gradient, but it was actually rattled to flat, and so they have to do basically the same thing you're seeing in the main turnpike, where they raise it and lower it in order to get basically the lateral gradient necessary in order to ensure that the drains And also, the runoff from here, there is no need for a detention facility at this point, there's an existing culvert, I believe, right about here, existing culvert right there. And there is no peak increase in the amount of peak runoff that will be generated by this road.
What do you mean by peak runoff? I don't understand that.
Peak runoff, it's a time of concentration when runoff, it goes by the theory that a drop of water in this watershed, and a drop of water in this watershed will come together in, at a certain time, and create the most amount of runoff, the greatest amount of runoff, and I'm getting reviewed by a seat.
Yeah, not exactly right.
The professional engineer over here is smiling at me because he knows I'm messing it up. But Jamie, do you wanna take it?
Theoretically, it's when the entire watershed is contributing runoff to a certain point, and that's where Ted gets into the time of concentration sampling. So what happens is, when they, you look at a peak runoff, it's when the whole, the whole watershed or drainage area, however you want to describe it, is contributing into runoff at your study point, which can be wherever you choose to discharge away, it naturally discharges stormwater.
So in this case, that's a culvert, correct?
There's a culvert, there's an existing culvert.
Or existing swale or anything.
Let's put it this way, we're not playing Houston.
Or what?
Not playing Houston.
I would hope not. I know what they got, I know exactly what they got. I've been flooded three times, I know what it's like.
What we say, no, no increase in peak runoff, that what we mean is that it's not gonna be any different from what it is now after it's built. So you're gonna have the same runoff, pretty much ending up in the same place, you're not gonna increase, you're not gonna concentrate it anywhere.
And Bill Walsh, has he done those counts?
Yes, the calculations are all on file.
And they're in the application, yeah.
Yeah, so we did specifically ask for those calculations.
Great, I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, but we're very concerned with it.
Yeah, I'm very concerned too.
Is there anybody else that has any questions, comments? I don't hear none, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at 7:48. We'll move right into our agenda. And the first item on the agenda is the Parker Woods Drive Expansion Private Way Application, a proposal to extend Parkwood, Parker Woods Drive thirteen hundred linear feet, and make improvements to the entire length of the private way to meet the construction standards for a road servicing three to seven residential lots on a forty-point-four acre site located at 183 Downing Road, tax map twenty-six thousand dollars, three and three C in the R4 Shoreland Overland and the NRC zoning districts. Troy Parker is the owner, and William Walsh III is the owner's agent. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. For some reason, I thought Paul was your agent.
He's everybody else's agent.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Parker?
I am, I, I'm not sure of Mr. Parker, but I, a lot of discussion went on about a lot of different things, but the board has pretty well dealt with a lot of the comments, but there's a couple that I, I think we should at least discuss. Ted commented that the notification for the site walk went out ten days, or the rule said seven. We heard, we heard from the public that they didn't receive it until two days ago, but we also heard that they've been traveling, so I don't know if it's because they were traveling and it was in there.
No, they have been...
Public hearing is done.
I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry for being abrupt, but there's a lot of information to go, so that was kind of on my... The idea of kind of postponing a vote, something that I think the board should at least discuss in moving on. As far as the flood plain, the runoff, the wetland impact, those studies have been done and have been submitted. Septic is when there's going to be something built, there isn't now. The impact on the Kennebunk River, again, based on the septic and the sites, we have that kind of data. The standards, as Mr. Parker said, and as our applications, if they met all of the travel rate, their proposal meets all of the travel rate requirements for this sort of... Their proposal meets all of the private way requirements for this sort of division, construction of a road. And then the third item, I think, and potentially that fourth item, uh, the idea of the fire trucks having to pass each other and the cul-de-sac, those designs are in place with, uh, not only our apparatus, you can comment to it, but even a larger one to assure that that sort of thing can take place. As far as the construction work that had been indicated, that there's been construction work going on, it's also been indicated from the applicant that actually it's some of the stockpiles that have been there forever. I would just say that someone commented, I've got that really a code enforcement kind of action, not a, not a board action. So, and Troy, I'm sorry to delay getting right into your thing, so, um, two items really that, that, um... Ted, I, I think your notification, do we know when that was mailed actually?
Yep, the postmark was the twenty-first. Oh, no, the, the mark, the postmark was the week before this one, which was the twenty-first.
Yeah. A week before this week.
Yes, correct. And the newspaper advertised when I actually went out on Monday, they got it in fast enough, so...
And it's been, and Marie, that did go right into the website.
No, the video.
But as far as the notification, what are the...
Yeah, and those are notifications, of course.
If the notification was mailed, the, the problem with the notification this time is that we had a hollering, which screwed everything up.
Well, that may...
I have a lot of state courts and block ads, so I won't pull too hard. Um, the only thing that I think we need to be careful about is the site block, whether the public notices went out to everybody. I, I never made that. Did anybody tell me how many, how many from the public did attend? Were, were, was there anybody?
Nobody was there?
There was nobody from...
We had two different sidewalks, two sidewalks. Tommy, it wasn't like...
Well, what I was hoping, someone showed up, so which would have meant it.
Well, Tom, let me ask you this, majority of the time, how much of the public do we have at a site block?
Well, that'll happen. Well, in this case, it may have been...
No, just saying, generally speaking.
Um, okay, so this, this, my concern is that, that we don't want to get into legal problems, right? For, I don't mean to get in your way, because I think you've done a great job. I will say, Dale, that, that what he's done, we had a lot of discussion on, on what was definitely, in most cases, he was going beyond what government planned, right? So, so I think, I think we've well done developing it, but, um, but the concern I have is, is about the site block. Whether there's notification, Ted, you said notification doesn't have to go out, we normally don't send notification for a site block.
When you say notification, let's, let's get our terms straight here.
Before you answer, let me just say, is, the wording is that the public are invited to attend a meeting. And it's the word invited. And maybe we're thinking they're welcome to attend, but invited, it means you, you send out an invitation, so...
No, they're welcome to attend, just like they're, any public, it's a public meeting, is what it is.
Well, welcome to attend and invited to attend could be...
Just like anybody in town could come to this meeting tonight. It's appetized.
They're welcome, but we don't, we're not...
You do advertise it.
Well, it's all advertised, and it's posted, and it's on, and it's on the bulletin board.
Yeah, the website.
Is it sufficient? Uh, you don't know?
Well, that, that's my only thing I think we've got to be careful about is legally, I don't want this to get kicked back where it was not avoided because of some misstep.
Well, let me ask you, Tom, if you're looking in the ordinance, does it's, what procedure does it have for notifying the butters for a site block?
It says they are to be, they are invited to attend.
Who's it, the butters are invited to attend? The public's invited to attend?
Which members of the public are invited to attend?
Members of the public are invited, big difference. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not talking about the butters, it says the public.
The only thing I guess to maybe put an end to some of these questions, maybe Ted can answer this quickly. Have I met all the requirements of the town and all the advertisements and hearings been legal to this point?
Yes.
Sure.
And that's not you, that's me. Yes, we are, we have made all our notifications in as the ordinance requires us to do. The ordinance doesn't require us to post on the town website, because on the website we actually are more effective ones, especially for people who live out of state or out of town or out of, or, or out of, or out of town at that particular moment. Of course, I, I'm sure that many people don't visit the town website on a regular basis to see what's happening in the planning board. It's not really, well, it's good drama, but it's not really good entertainment. Um, so I, we, we probably don't get as, as many of the public to find out what's happening in the planning board and so we want to deal with the selectmen as we would like, and the only time these things come up is when we have a, a project. Uh, if the board ever wants to entertain a more thorough method of, of notification, certainly we can do that. But right now, we have basically the newspaper, the, the website, and the posting on the, on the boards that, that we do. Uh, and we also, of course, also have our, uh, email notifications, which we unfortunately have not been able to get up, but now we're up and running again, those technical difficulties have been resolved. So we're, we're trying just about every, every method except for notifying the butters prior to the public hearing. That's the only thing that we, the only, the only time we actually made mailings to individual property owners is prior to the public hearing.
Point of order. Technically, also, fact is, this is actually the second per se public hearing because the first one did not cover enough time to actually have a public hearing. So that's why it is presently tonight.
But it wasn't actually scheduled as a public hearing.
It was scheduled by us, but it was never posted, so that's why it was never, because it was not held as a public hearing.
I think this project has been thoroughly reviewed by the board, and I feel very comfortable with it. I also feel that we have met as a board in the town all of the legal obligations. That being said, I'm not happy with the notification. Two days doesn't, you know, doesn't seem right to me, and I think we need to address that as a board going forward. But as to our current ordinance, we have met the requirements. And if there were any question in my mind as to the, uh, the project itself or any aspect of it, I would say, no, we probably should postpone it, but I'm extremely comfortable with this project. Mr. Parker has, uh, Mr. Troy has done, Mr. Parker has done, as Thomas said, uh, an excellent job as far as engineering. He's gone above and beyond most of the requirements, which is why I feel so comfortable with it. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with it going forward, but I would like the board to make a note that we should review the notice requirements. I don't think it's adequate.
Okay. I would concur with John with that, to the point of potentially discussing it if we had time permits later this meeting. I'll express on everybody's mind.
I'm not sure.
I understand.
I, I agree, I'd like to be able to discuss that issue. Do you have anything else, Jamie?
Uh, I was not able to attend the, I guess, the second of the two meetings, but based on Ted's review memo, um, I trust that the, the provisions and questions that we asked about stormwater management were adequately satisfied by the engineer.
Yeah, um, I have this letter here to actually, to give the recount.
Yeah, we can pass it now.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions?
No, I don't see any reason why I can't go forward.
Well, I think we have a couple of issues that we need to look at. The first of which is that under seven-seven B seven, we have to determine the type of surety we want. Do we want, uh... We can have either a construction surety or an engineer's certification. So we, we need to address that issue. Do we want financial or will we settle for something that's certified? The other, the other thing that we need to have is the maintenance agreement. Have we got that yet?
Oh, no, that's a provision that is in, would be in the findings of fact that they cannot get COs until six hundred and so's maintenance agreements are filed. It had to be filed with their deeds.
Okay.
So far, there's no deed. So, uh, when and if lots are created, the maintenance agreement is assigned to, is basically attached to whatever property is there. The format would be great, but they're all pre-standard maintenance agreements based on lots.
Right, Ingraham is my attorney, who draws up the road maintenance agreements, and, um, he's aware that it's going to happen, and we're going to draw one up, it's going to be based upon the number of lots with equal share to road maintenance rights, which I can do, you know, relatively quickly. And Skins and Shaw is my bonding agent, and I have a letter here, it's still a fax, it didn't come out very well, but I've been bonding projects with them for twenty-five years, and their letter pretty much says that they are, um, they're a customer. I've been a customer there, so we're going to bond this project, and, I mean, we used to do DOT work, and you have to put up a bond when you do DOT work. I'm more than willing to just bond a project, which a lot of people don't in this case, but I am bondable and I'm willing to bond projects, so...
Yeah, and that was going to be my comment. By our performance guarantees and by history of the board, this, this section has, was alluded to by the town planner, was kind of a little off, but it is the applicant that determines which one of those, and there's four different types, that they, they consider. The board, if it has any conditions of the surety other than what is mentioned under thirteen-one, uh, and thirteen-two for the, for the contents, then the board can, it's involved, but by, by history, and as Ted has said, once, once the applicant has, has determined how he wants to do it, it looks like he's choosing thirteen-one-one point B, uh, performance bond, and Troy, under thirteen-one, can get those provisions exactly, but ask the, what the contents have to be in there. The board has in the past, um, whenever it goes through due approval, it's supposed to be part, this is part of the submission application, but since the board is involved, you can't. On approval and, and then tell you the, what the condition is.
Check out that thing, right?
So, so, it's just, it's another area that we need to, we need to address.
I'm going to make sure that that, that got touched up, because there's a couple of points there.
Yeah. To the chair?
Yes.
Just, just a point, uh, to note that the seven-seven B process has its own bonding requirements that's separate from thirteen-one. I, I appreciate you looking at thirteen, but thirteen's for subdivision road.
This is the private way?
This is a private way.
Just saying bonding is fine.
It's, yeah, there's two, there's two options. Engineering certification or financial surety, sure.
Right, and it is up in the applicant.
Is the box anyone that's up for, which would have been fine with the board. I mean, I want to look for it, you guys, you guys pick. And the details are generally worked out between the applicant and, or, or the amount, once you have the cost.
And usually, most of the cities and states that you work with for road building, they would prefer a hundred percent sharing bond.
Seven-seven B says it's a, it's a hundred percent of the road cost plus ten percent.
Some towns are, some towns are the project cost, some towns the one hundred percent, hundred ten percent.
Yeah, it is a hundred and ten percent.
So, so, something else.
I do not have anything else. Does, does the board have anything else for the applicant?
So with, I, I, no, there, those two things are outstanding, the surety or the bonding, that, which you guys will do, so that should be a condition of approval. The maintenance agreement itself, the wording can actually be bombed into that, bombed.
But you don't need, you don't need a maintenance agreement until you actually transfer a lot, right?
But presently, there is a maintenance agreement on the two lots already coming in on the Parker Road through the turn.
Right.
So there is already...
It'll have to be rewritten, correct? Even shares of no law.
I would suggest that the template maintenance agreement be provided to staff as a, as a condition of approval.
It pretty much will boil clean, they use in every town, road maintenance agreement, five lots, five equal shares.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, it's, uh, pretty simple. Yeah, I can have that done within a few days.
Actually, the most important thing is filing.
Right.
You know, filing.
Has to be recorded with the subdivision plan once it's approved.
Well, there's probably ways to get it filed separately.
Yep, but they...
Within ninety days.
They also reference the subdivision plan as approval in the road maintenance agreement. The lawyer always references that, so if someone goes to the registry deeds, they can see it and find it.
Right.
Then there's a lot that's added, that you've given, that's put into the registry of deeds under the master's, the land law.
It's amended.
And as long as it's, once every five years, it's definitely exempted, you have them created.
Having digested all that, I'd like to make a motion, we proceed to the findings of fact.
Sure.
Motion's been made to go to findings of fact. Any discussion? Anyone in favor? Assuming that you named this. Okay. Whereas on April ninth, two thousand fifteen, the Arundel Planning Board did receive a private way permit application from Troy Parker to upgrade and extend Parker Woods Drive thirteen hundred linear feet and make improvements to the entire length of the private way to meet the construction standards for a road servicing three to seven residential lots on a forty-point-four acre site located at one eighty-three Downing Road, tax map twenty-six, lots three and three C in the R four shoreline overlay and the NRC zoning districts. Troy Parker is the owner and William Walsh III P E is the owner's agent. Whereas on April twenty-third, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public site run to inspect the proposed site in accordance with the provisions of section seven-seven B four B of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Whereas on May twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of section seven-seven V four B of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, whereupon the Arundel Planning Board has given due consideration of the applicant's private way application and has arrived at the following findings and conclusions. Findings of fact, number one, the applicant and owner of the existing Parker Woods Road is Troy Alisa Parker. Number two, the property is located at one eighty-three Downing Road and is identified as Arundel Assessors Map fourteen, lot three C, and is located in the R four shoreline overlay and the NRC zoning districts. Number three, Parker Woods Drive currently serves two dwelling units on lots, lots map twenty-five, three A, three B, and the remaining land of Troy Alisa Parker located on lot three C. Lot three also accesses Parker Woods Road from the rear, but maintains its principal access from Downing Road. Number four, Parker Woods Drive was originally approved as a minor subdivision and private way serving two lots and the remainder land in two thousand and three, with subsequent revisions in two thousand six and two thousand nine. The applicant proposes to reconstruct the existing portion of the road approved by the Arundel Planning Board in two thousand nine to the minimum standard cross-section of eighteen feet in travel width with three-foot gravel shoulders in conjunction with the new, for... in conjunction with the new for a private way... Yeah. The wording for me for a bit there. With the new requirements for a private way serving three to seven lots as specified under Section 77B2A of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Number five, the portion of the existing road designated for reconstruction, the Arundel Planning Board has granted at its May 15th, 2015 meeting, a waiver to permit the pre-2014 standard MDOT type D gravel to remain in place and be supplemented with current standards for MDOT type D 703.06B to meet the 18-inch base course depth where required. Number six, in addition, the applicant is proposing to exceed road construction standards of 77B2A by installing a three-and-a-half to three-and-a-quarter by culminous concrete pavement. Number seven, the applicant is providing a standard cul-de-sac terminus at the terminus of the proposed road extension. Number eight, in support of this application, the applicant has submitted horizontal and vertical plans and profiles, details, and soil erosion control plans of the private way improvements entitled Parker Woods Drive Private Way Plan for Troy Parker as prepared by Walsh Engineering Associates Incorporated dated March 26th, 2015 with revisions. In addition, Walsh Engineering Associates Incorporated has provided pre- and post-development HydroCAD Stormwater Analysis and Stormwater Management Plan dated March 26th, 2015, with revisions to May 4th, 2015 documenting no net increase in peak runoff rates for a 25-year frequency storm generated by the proposed road improvements. Conformance with conditional use criteria, after due review and consideration, the Arundel Staff Review Committee has determined the application to be in conformance with with all criteria of Section 77B of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Does that not say Arundel Planning Board?
Yes. This is not staff.
After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with all criteria of Section 77B of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in that. One, the proposed road reconstruction and extension meets all horizontal and vertical alignment standards of Section 77B2A, 77B2B, 77B2C, and 77B2D. The proposed road reconstruction and extension beats and exceeds the typical road cross-section mandated under Section 77B2A. Number three, the proposed stormwater management plan meets and exceeds the minimum drainage standards of Section 77B2E. Number four, the applicant's sediment and erosion control plan meets the standards of Section 77B2F. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves private way permit application of Troy Parker to upgrade and extend Parker Woods Drive 1,300 linear feet and make improvements to the entire length of the private way to meet construction standards for a road servicing three to seven residential lots on a 40.4 acre site located at 183 Downing Road, tax map 26, lots 3 and 3C in the R4 Shoreland Overlay and the NRC zoning districts subject to the following conditions. Number one, prior to construction of the private way improvements or the issuance of a building permit on Lot 3C, the applicant shall post a performance bond with the town of Arundel in the amount approved by the town planner. 10% contingency shall be withheld for 60 days after completion of the improvements to ensure that all work has been completed in conformance with the drawing and design standards. Number two, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy on Lot 3C or any other subdivision of 3C thereof, the applicant shall submit to the code enforcement officer a sealed certification from Walsh Engineering Associates Incorporated that all proposed road improvements depicted on the approved plans have been constructed in accordance to that plan and the construction standards of Section 77BA of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Number three, within 90 days of the signing of the record Mylar by the planning board, the applicant shall record the approved private way plan in the York County Registry of Deeds along with deed revisions to Lot 3C to create a 50-foot wide right-of-way for Parker Woods Drive and a revised maintenance agreement for all properties served by Parker Woods Drive. Number four, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancies on Lot 3C or any subdivision thereof, the applicant shall submit to the code enforcement officer a copy of the filing of a revised maintenance agreement for Parker Woods Drive, which includes the proposed Lot 3C as a responsible party. So, approved by the Arundel Planning Board this 28th day of May, 2015.
Want to approve?
A second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mark.
According to this, the first issue of sureties that you had brought up, this is already addressed as an answer. Certified engineering instead of surety of posted bond.
Right. You've kind of got them both in there, what you're saying, right? I mean, when you put up a bond, the bond is... that's what it's there for, to guarantee completion of the...
Yeah, but what we do is we want the engineer to certify the board. I'm not going out there. I can't sit out there. I can't... I can't bigger such a project. I don't have enough staff to do that.
And the... I think you would put pavement in there too.
Yeah.
It's not... I'm not required to pave the whole road immediately.
Your plan shows pavement, the whole thing?
The whole thing?
I don't know.
Eventually. Well, it shows pavement because that's what your road design costs for. 15 inches, three inches, and three inches is your road standards. But it doesn't... your road standards doesn't say it has to be paved. Saying if it is paved, it's 15, three, and three. That's what your board in the states is. 15 inches base, three inches across, three inch pavement. That's why it's on there because that's the profile. But it's not required that I do pave the road immediately before I can take it off.
You need to take it off the document. Because when you put it on there, that means you have to do that.
So, you want me to remove the three inches of pavement from the plan?
If you don't want to be held accountable for it, you're not required to. You're going to be limited to seven... I mean, you're going to be limited to seven lots anyways.
Well, right, but I mean, they put it on there.
If you get a one-seven lots, you're too narrow, like a 20-foot road.
You know, Paul, they generally put it on there because it is a requirement of your road building, but it's not required for me to pave this subdivision road. But if I want to, it needs to be three inches.
If you want to pave it, terrific, but take it off your plan.
Well, couldn't it be done with a note as well?
I wouldn't mind leaving it on there because eventually I will pave it. I don't want to be required to pave it like this says before I can get a building permit or an occupancy permit.
But that's the problem. You're asking us to approve it. It is on the plan as being paved. If we approve that, you have to pave it. So, if you don't want to pave it now, you're going to have to take the paving.
Like earlier, I wouldn't pave it anyway till after one winter of sitting there.
I understand that.
Generally, what state they should do, let it sit for one year before you pay. And by this standard, you would have to do it beforehand.
No. What I'm saying is, if you have it on your plans, this is a contract document.
Right.
So, if you've got it on your plans, whether you're required to do it or not, you're saying, I'm going to do this. And you're going to bond for it and you're going to do the work. If you don't want to do that, the board needs to know that now and you need to amend your plan.
I would like to take the pavement off.
Yeah, I think we just leave... we table this until a future date when we get a new set of plans.
Why would you do that?
It's amended pending the removal of the pavement, pending the removal of the pavement.
What do you think, guys?
I mean, it's not... pavement's not one of your subdivision requirements.
We're not looking at specific issues. We're looking at private roads.
I don't have a problem with that. They've got...
Why can't that not begin with a note on the plan?
Just stay it off. Take the pavement off. What you do is you just erase those notes on that detail that show the paper.
Question, if I may, what he is upgrading in what we have the present Parker Woods, which is being re... brought up to new standards. Okay. If that section there is... was paved, okay, is that going to be repaved?
Yeah, I'm taking that out.
That we already established when we need to go.
If they want to pave it, there's nothing that prevents them from paving it. It's not going to change anything on there, but if it's on the plan as a... as pavement on the cross-section, it's got to be built that way. That's the way it is, guys.
Right, and I just don't want to...
Remove it from the plan.
It will be paved one day, but I don't want to be obligated to pave it this fall when I get an occupancy permit. And I wouldn't want to pave it that quick anyway. I would want it to set for a year.
He is requiring that that one not the base to set for a year.
Would you say you would think that?
Yeah.
Amendment around at 600.
Yeah, we can amend it to 600. Yeah, he would have to amend the findings of fact and take them to 600. Yeah, take it out. We just got amended, so we had a reconsideration of the findings of fact and the motion. I'd like to make a motion that item 6 on the findings of fact, in addition to the applicant proposing to exceed the construction standards of 77B2, I install a 3.5, please specify the first component to be removed from the findings of fact.
Second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to remove the findings of fact number 6. The conditions? No, the findings of fact, sorry. Any discussion on it?
We're removing that and are we... So, then we're going to renumber and then are we requiring... We're removing that and requiring him to take it off the plan?
Yeah.
Requiring a resubmission. He's got to give me a new plan.
Right, you know, to reflect that in an updated plan.
Yeah, Bill's got to give me a signature page. He's got to put it in this... so, these guys can sign my one. You can file.
Yeah.
And also, so we just remove it from the cross-section. And also needs to put on that note that this will not be a town vote. So, he's got to do that anyways, so it's not... that's a big deal.
Okay.
He can erase it or he can redraw it. Does the board have a problem with that? This is the standard that's in excess of what's required for certain lots.
Yeah, it's not required.
It's not required. Troy wants to do that.
Yeah, the refriend just deleted.
Okay, so let's vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of removing 6? Vote. Okay, on to the original motion.
I'll restate that motion to accept the revised findings of fact and conditions.
I'm going to second it.
I'll second that, but I think you need to do with the condition that the notes are removed.
But we're not signing that tonight, so...
We're not signing my one tonight.
I think when we see that, we can write.
Yes.
Well, we should have it stated somewhere that to remove, otherwise it can come in without...
Well, I think it's in the minutes regardless.
It should be part of the motion.
I'll make a motion. I agree. Make a motion. That the plans that be amended.
Okay.
We'll add that to the motion that the plans be amended to...
Move the pavement from the typical cross-section. Okay, we also have some powerful information. The formosa conditions, got to have the review and consideration. The Arundel Planning Board, that has to be amended, so the approval has to be with that amendment there as well.
Okay, so... so, the motion, I don't know that that needs to be part of this motion. Isn't that already done? We just changed...
You said as a reading list.
Yeah.
So, that's all set. So, the motion simply is to approve the revised findings of fact and conditions for Parker Woods. Parker Woods going with...
And the map change, not the plan revised to reflect.
On the Mylar.
Okay.
Second words.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, guys?
Yeah, under our conformance with conditional use criteria, items 1 and 2 refer to exceeding the standards of 77B2, 77B... B, A, B, C, and D. There is no requirement of... while he meets them, taking those out, he meets the stated that he doesn't exceed them.
I remember 2 essentially...
2 says that he exceeds.
Right. Right, exceeds, just to meet.
Okay.
He meets. Number 2.
Yeah, 2 and 3.
Number 2 under the conformance with conditional use criteria, 77B2. They're striking it.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
That being a part of the...
There is nothing. All those in favor of the motion to accept the revised findings of fact and the inclusion on the Mylar, the removal of the pavement along with the notes? Motion is your name. Okay, up next. It's built. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Ledwood Meadow subdivision, preliminary subdivision application. The proposed development of a two-lot commercial subdivision and a four-lot cluster subdivision on 20.76 acre located at 14 Leg Cliff Drive, tax maps 4, lots 24 and 25B in the CC and in the R4 zone. Philip and Hugh Labby are the applicants and call Gadvoice PE and he is our agent.
Thank you for coming to our public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the meeting.
I can't sit that long. I would stay. I've got seven backs for a reason.
I saw yours today. It looked like it's about ready to come down.
Somebody wants to cut some timber, I'm serious.
What's that?
My barn.
His barn. Looks like it's about to come down.
10-foot long dairy barn is ready to be...
Talk to Tom.
Somebody ready to take it for him.
Talk to Tom.
I'll be talking to you.
Seriously.
Yeah, we need... Thank you again.
Okay, on to... why do I think we've seen this before in an earlier revision?
I'm on.
You're on.
My name is Gadvoice, I'm representing Philip Labby on the subdivision. Let's get the drive off the road. This project came from the board. I think I said it took out the mine. I have information here that I took that. My reputation, they got final approval substitute for the conditions that Philip supplied the association documents, the old names docs. That never took place for one reason or another, so there's a course. Another guy built, another guy died. So, it's been over two years, so obviously it's no longer... the approval is no longer valid and we're back in front of the board to... I see preliminary pen approval this evening, I think, is what we're trying to obtain. So, in order to stay ahead of this possible zone change, it's coming back after June. So, project was reviewed by Dwight Gensler, I believe, from...
Correct. Was he from DeLuca?
Yeah, it was from DeLuca. So, you know, it's stormwater casualty review by DeLuca. I don't have the entire second funding, obviously. The Laskin Associates, I traced studies for the second areas. I think I tried to give probably that, your packet of the old information. Project required some DEP sole permits, you know, for solar service within so many three-inch stream. We did apply for those. That improved. The party didn't require DEP stormwater fund, but it was a PBR. The project didn't require a D E P stormwater grant, but it was a P E R for D E P, and we sent that application, and also back when we did the project in two thousand and eleven, yes.
It's not a certification, right?
Correct. It's not a certification and, and or D E P stormwater grant, because we didn't trigger the threshold for impervious area projects, so. I think, you know, Ted did address some of the outstanding issues. We did have a fire pond that was, that we designed, and of course we had the Laskin Associates, it was the high note water levels that were used in the termination of the amount of volume required for that pond. Dwight Enson, doing the view and design, I think Ted brought up that we didn't finalize the, the fire suppression system with the fire chief, and we certainly go through that on next submission. So, and obviously we will be working on the concrete docks and the gold main docks, and I will realize that we have to provide easement to the fire ponds, and certainly can do that in writing, give the fire department access to that fire pond where we care and maintenance. Now, when the docks actually will be responded, maintain the level of the water in ponds, if something should happen, we have to give the public to construct new dry hiding, but the city won't, the town will respond to that, but the town will respond to maintaining the cities. So, you know, obviously with the process, we can update the road, Phil will either inspire our performance jury as we move forward, so. I can answer any questions the board might have, and we're hoping tonight that we can, preliminary technical, so the project, grandfather project should be changed.
So, Paul, as you said, this was before the board in two thousand and ten, we've got the dates on the map anyway.
Yeah.
I did send some paperwork.
At any rate, are there any changes to the project since that time that I remember it was thoroughly reviewed at that?
No, we haven't made any changes at all, as far as the plan sets and future changes, the project, we're not planning on changing anything. I don't think we made a state law to change or any, those things haven't changed. Unfortunately, we'll have to redo the D E P permit update, they expire after two years, so. We'll have to resubmit the services, permanent updates back to D E P, and if you have a stormwater, I'll put that in, but. Both of these fire, I don't see that being a problem within the future.
Bob, you have questions?
Yeah, I, I come back and, I come back and forth, I mean. Paul, I want to refer to some of your detail sheets with fire pond, dry hydrant setup. Let's move, move to. What do you title this?
What sheet?
The storm drain outlet, this one showing, this one.
What's the number of the pond, Bob?
Huh?
What's the number? Five, she five to seven?
Yeah.
Is it she five to seven?
They did plan two. So, the middle, the middle one here is the dry hydrant. The same as the one back on the last one, and this is stormwater management.
Make sure I got the sheet here.
That's what you're telling me. So this is the five, five oh eight, this is, this is the fire pond.
Yeah.
Right? And is this big pond?
Let me go over here, Bob, I don't think I have a thing.
So this is the fire pond? Fire pond. This is a stormwater management.
And a stormwater management.
Stormwater management. Okay, and this, and this one is the same as we were just showing this one.
Correct, and I think that was, this was a permit for the solar derivatives within, for D E P.
Okay, and we're within it, that's all.
Because I had to construct that pond, I had to be twenty-five feet away for the.
I just wanted to.
Yep.
I tried to follow them on here, see, and then on this one, we have just one, and this was the one for the whole plan, so I got totally confused. Just wanted to make sure that that, so it is that plan eight that's got all the.
Are you, you're putting in a fire pond and a tank?
Nope, it's a fire pond going in.
Well, I, because I can see the fire pond over here, but there's a note here that says install fire lane and fire tank. At a different location, you've got your fire pond here, but you've got a fire tank.
I had one day to plot twelve sets, and different layers were on and off.
Okay.
So I tried to, you know, grab the old file that I had and plot. So, there are going to be a little bit of issue between what was. And I didn't catch that, but that note obviously is not on.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't look right.
That's right, exactly. I'm looking at old things that I have here, and I see that whether we want a new tank or a circular pond, but. Just to get the snapshots all set up, I had to transfer my old software, my new software, and it's really not like pushing a button, unfortunately.
Wasn't happy, did you?
No, it just, you know, it's a long bit of a work setting up.
Yeah, there's something about setting up new software.
No, there's always something.
Always.
Yeah, I just think, I just think with the, I think there's.
So we're proposing the pond on the.
Yeah, so you have it on the other sheets too?
Yeah, on the other sheet.
I knew there'd be some glitches, but I just.
Slacker.
Slacker.
Wait a minute.
Okay, and let's, let's just keep in mind that this is a pre-app, so. It's pretty deep shape for a preliminary application.
Well, remember, this is preliminary subdivision, this is pre-app, this is preliminary subdivision. Which means that there's a two-step process in subdivision, preliminary, which we go over all of the technical details in the final, which is the other public hearing, part preliminary in the final. That's when it has to get all its deep, keep everything all squared away, things like condo docks, easements, squared away and so forth. So, this is preliminary, first stage, and then the second stage is fine. So preliminary, we have to have a public hearing.
No.
It's, it's. No, preliminary, you have a public hearing, and then it's, and then you can elect whether or not you're going to have a public hearing for the final.
So, that means we have to have.
To have a public hearing for a preliminary?
No.
It's not, it's preliminary subdivision, remember, this is, we haven't had a subdivision in a long time.
What you're saying is that we should be having a public hearing now?
No, we're going to have a public hearing for this, but what you do is accept this application as a preliminary application tonight.
But, but question along that way, five or six years ago, okay? When it was basically, all of us approved. I don't think we had a public hearing then, for our preliminary.
Yeah, you did. The question was, when are you going to have a public hearing again? We're fine, that was what you were going to do.
Preliminary, I don't, I mean.
Doesn't matter, we've got it now, we're running out of time here.
Yeah, I'm glad.
Yeah. You'll get to be chairman.
No, I'm not.
Well, I think the.
I don't read well, remember?
I think the issue now, we don't have to address when we're going to have a public hearing tonight. Tonight, we have to determine whether or not we accept this pre-application, and then we have to schedule a site walk. Preliminary, yes, the preliminary application, and then we need to schedule a site walk.
First site walk, it doesn't count.
No.
That was way too.
Yeah, we got overgrown. We are mountain goats.
I'll make a motion, we accept this as a preliminary application.
Oh, second, the motion's been made and seconded to accept this as a preliminary application. Is there any discussion? All those in, Bob?
Yeah. It's hard, it's, correct from the front row on here, but all of these outstanding issues, yes, they have been before, fine. We haven't really, and we haven't really gone over them.
Yeah, we're going to have to do that whole process.
Yeah, that begins with accepting of this. You're not approving it tonight.
Well, I understand, no, I understand. I do understand that, but typically, we, they get very clear, this is what we expect it to.
Where this is a little bit more extreme, like you've already seen it, and it's pretty thorough. Because it's already been done, so.
All those in favor of the motion?
Yes.
And what opposed?
No, I didn't.
Okay, motion carries, the man is the. Now we need to schedule a site walk.
Next plan board meeting is what?
Next plan board meeting is June eleventh.
So we plan a site walk before the meeting?
Uh, if I remember correctly, okay, depending on how far you want to hike, okay?
We could, we could do it on.
Well, we can have them build a bridge before that. They'll be good at that.
Pretty dry now.
Yeah, it's not that bad.
I'd like to make a motion, we do a site walk on June eleventh at six o'clock. It's not like we haven't seen it properly before.
Well, Jamie has. Jamie had.
That's great, I didn't make the first one. Okay, motion has been made and.
Second that.
To hold the site walk, motion has been made and seconded to hold the site walk six P M, June eleventh. Any discussion?
I don't know if I can make it.
It's the day after town meeting.
The only, there's no difference on the site from when you walked in before. Except the trees are a little bit bigger, and the mosquitoes are a lot bigger.
We expect that to be taken care of.
A lot more ticks still.
Hasn't been attached.
No, a lot more ticks still, a lot more ticks still.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, a few more.
I don't understand, I would have thought we killed someone down.
Oh, yeah, give your thoughts, okay, so the motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
I guess I don't.
All those in favor? Okay, just make it for the regular media.
Remember, we have a hearing that night too, we have a relevant.
You got a hearing that night, don't you?
Yes.
Yes, we have a bias.
We have a bias hearing.
This is, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Hopefully we do.
Phil, we'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks, out at the property.
And you, and then you can come join us for the meeting.
Yes. Okay.
So, here regardless of what happened at town meeting, I did want to be sure. This, this application is under review and has been seen by the board, he's fine, no matter what happened.
Yes, he's under substantive review at this time.
I'm under review.
Assuming then he already passes, if they already passes, it's, it's a new point, but if they, if it doesn't pass, it's a new point.
Well, yeah, if it passes, they, but.
If he passes, he's, he's safe.
C Y B.
Well, that's, I. Pretty much on his side for me. It works well.
Well, I don't think that's a concern, to make sure that.
That's what's going.
He was allowed in that zone, hey?
Yeah. It wasn't the, under the conditions.
Right.
But that's why he's here now, to make sure.
Yeah, I'm just saying, under the old, we didn't change it, okay? Except extending it farther down.
Oh, yeah, the.
Users.
Yeah.
Just to remind the board, the complaint committee were put in the standard that there will be no more residential subdivisions.
Yeah, right.
In that list, except for those that resent provisions, family or five year.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's, that affects all parties.
That's right, he's not going to have anybody, that's going to be for fifty-five and older, is that right? Condos are fifty-five and older. They're going to be making license plates on the farm. No, I'm just asking you, fifty-five and older.
Okay, let's move on to this, let's move on to the next level. Lovejoy subdivision, subdivision pre-application. Proposed development of a three lot residential cluster subdivision, construction of an eight hundred linear foot plus or minus private ways serving four lots on six point two one acres located at two ninety-five Limerick Road, tax map twenty-eight lot six in the R one and R four zones. Peter Lovejoy is the owner of the application, and Paul Gabboy is the owner of his agent.
Good evening, my name is Paul Gabboy, for the record. The applicants are here this evening, Peter and Elizabeth, owners of the property. If you have any questions, they might be in some of the questions the board might have. I think the board did see this project in the past, Ted did refer to that, some, like came from the board a couple times, or three separate occasions, I guess. So I think at that time, I can't remember if it was six new lots proposed, but I don't really remember exactly sketch plan it looked like anymore, so. Peter hired my corporate, my company to see what you do with this site. Entering also hired Mark Hammon to re-remake the wetlands. They worked on previously, several years ago, however, there's no documentation as to how they were located, or any way that I could use that information, so we had it redone. So I didn't calculate some of that density requirements to figure out just how many lots this project might be able to have. D E P has been up to the site, originally the project, or at the current time, the project has, is three lots. It's a lot that has a, created by the state lot, that has a fifty foot wide easement. Actually, only fifty foot wide right away, only V, and this right away turns back fifty wide to a lot that I call lot two. That was created by the state lot. And then lot one, this actually runs along this dashed fifty foot right away, only V by lot one, and then it's along lot one, and then around this lot, not on the corum, corum, apparently corum. That's the one in lot one. And so what we're, we're developing is the remaining land called lot three, which I subdivided, subdivided the lot A, B and C. So, lot one exists, lot two exists, with a D reference, with a D reference, and the remaining land on the original D would be lot three, which I'm returning subdividing to lot A, B and C. So, originally, when I was trying to put this back together for D E P, you know, the applicant wanted to construct a roadway and within the existing fifty foot right away that lot two owns, which is again their Peter and Elizabeth. So, they could actually convey rights to do that. However, that was a breadth and impact that was greater than fifteen thousand square feet, and that would push us into a tier two wetland permitting process for D E P, and. Not something that would be very viable, because you've got to pay the, you know, mitigation fees, so. And then that, and that would have given us four lots, because obviously I would have had some lot in the area, I would have used the net density, that would have given us four blocks, having been able to actually permit that. That, you know, proved to be not viable, so I came up with an alternative, where I actually pushed the road over. Now, the wetland crossing actually came into an up plan, then another wetland crossing here, to basically same cause that area that we had for the four lots. D E P came up to the site, reviewed the wetland delineation, that were performed by Cam, and found that Mark Hammon was actually a little bit more conservative than she probably needed to be, and she was acceptable to his wetland delineation. And I know Mark Hammon, and she was pushing the envelope, because he, that's, you know, not right or wrong, it's just.
Smart.
Yeah, that's right. So, I think her name is Lisa or no, or Karen, I can't remember. She, she did come out to perform a site walk, we actually took it down, this area, and she actually did find that this is smaller, I put it right here. She is going to say it's a little bit, I went back and I located this upwind, so actually this little shade area is not going to be wetland filled, because this is portion of our plan. So, she said that it'll be great, it'll make your numbers even smaller, so she was fine with that. I, I think that she kind of thought that plan actually was even further back, you know, it had less upwind builds. But again, this is what Mark Hammon flagged, and that's how I located, so that's what we use for the calculations. So I think, you know, D E P seemed to be okay with us moving forward for the wetland fill application. I have not done that, because I'm kind of estimating the seventy-two hundred square feet, I'm estimating the thirty-five hundred square feet, I don't really did the exact numbers, and so I actually did a plan on profile, and actually created two one slopes, and I really calculated what we have to fill, so. But I mean, I think that's, you know, pretty accurate, that's in three feet hydro, we're all doing two one slopes, so. That's going to change, but I don't think it'll change a whole lot, it'll push me into the tier two. But right now, I'm at seventy-two hundred plus, you know, I'm at ten thousand, so. I'm well within fifteen thousand square feet, so I don't see that to be an issue. You know, and then we're. The wet, you know, and then we're at the point where this project is 6.21 acres.
Believe it's six acres and half the cluster? Right?
That's four lots. Six acres and four lots.
About half the cluster. Oh, I guess I don't remember that portion of the cluster.
You're clustering it though.
You're clustering it.
Well, I guess I want to, I guess I want to talk about that.
We've got a list.
Do I have to cluster this? Because I'll tell you.
So Tim, you said the criteria is six acres and four lots?
Yeah.
You're going to find that in eight.
Then again, if you wait until after town meeting, you may not be required to.
Why, you didn't change that, right?
Changed that.
Changed that to what, 10 acres?
No, you guys didn't want to, so we didn't.
Why not?
Disgusted. Disgusted, disgusted, decided not to proceed and didn't do it.
Oh, I thought we said.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we said that it wasn't.
Was it in the public hearing?
Was it going to be mandatory?
Was it in the public hearing?
No.
We, we did have the discussion about whether it was mandatory. But I don't remember that.
Well, we never got around to doing it. Didn't get around to doing it, so. Although there's always next year.
Yeah.
All right, here we go.
Here we go again, round and round.
Let's see, cluster 8-4. So, those of you who want to refer to your, uh, zoning ordinance, it's 8-4, which is cluster development, plan unit development. Let's see. Basic requirements, cluster plan units shall meet the following criteria. Minimum land area for cluster plan unit development shall be six acres. And that's the standard, but then when we go over to to the section I call Bob's booby traps, which are over on section 63. We were finding that all residential subdivisions are more than four lots shall be clustered in accordance to section 8.4.
And isn't it 8.4 that says that we have to, for, since you're asking, since Paul, you're asking? I think the board has to take into consideration, not only the lots you're establishing, but the lot that already exists. You know, so even if you were trying to adjust, I think you might run into problems. As I, I'm just trying to help you answer your.
So, um.
Why do we have to consider that? Because I've been involved in subdivision in the past.
Well, that's a good point, these, these, these lots are, these lots are, are taken out of these equations, was called, was saying, because they've been sold.
Right.
They're no longer part of the review process.
Yeah.
See, you're right, I think that's the big one. You count as a lot though, to what triggers subdivision. Because, you know, I have to count, so if I was going to do two lots here, I can't, because these, this lot here was created within the five-year period, I got this one, I got that one. So the third lot, the third lot, you know, so you still have to count them, you know, as when you trigger your subdivision. But once they've been conveyed, I don't believe that they're, they're not part of the package anymore. There's something, something we're going to be looking at. And that's why the ones are.
No, but the consideration has to be, uh, is they, is it within that five-year period, is it to be considered?
Count it as a lot.
Yeah.
But not count as part of the subdivision.
Right, because it's been more than five years.
No.
No, it's been two, but.
Uh, there are two deeded lots. What, what, all the developed area, or the, uh, the proposed area, was that part of Lot 1 or 2, or was it 3?
Lot 1, okay, the deeded Lot 1 comes right down the edge of this 50-foot action strip, and then down again, okay? And then back through it. That's one. Lot 2 owns this 50-foot wide strip, okay? And owns this 50-foot wide strip. And is this area right here, okay?
And they were.
So what's the rest of the land?
So the rest of the land is, from here over, that's the rest of the property.
Is that a separate deeded lot?
Well, that, well, it's in fact his remaining land.
Right. But remaining land is.
Doesn't have to be deeded, still owned by Peter.
But, but whose deed is, I mean, what, what deed is, is it a separate deed?
The original, the original deed. It hasn't changed, so.
It's lots as well, because we don't even have this on our maps.
So the original deed, it was back in 1026, base 323, that's when Peter bought it, okay? And then since then, he's conveyed, uh, Lot 1, which is filed in book 16892. He conveyed Lot 2, which is filed in book 16892 again.
And they were just both created within the past year.
Correct. Yeah, December 6, 8, September 18, 2014, and September 18, 2014, both created about in the same day.
That makes it, yeah.
So all right, so we got to talk about subdivision. How you're going to.
It's actually a brief.
Well, actually, you know. Because we're talking about, we're talking, uh, a one-acre lot size. It's pretty hard to, uh, a subdivision when you have a one-acre lot size. I mean, you know. If you had a five-acre lot size, and you, you know, or six acres or something like that. You can't go much lower than one acre to get well in separate acres. But pretty hard to get lower than an acre to do that, but.
Depends on the soils.
Three acres subdivision, three-acre lot size, then that doesn't work with law if you're using a six-acre minimum, so something's not quite, I think, right with the way things you guys are trying to do it, but anyway, in this case, that's what it is. It's a one-acre requirement. So, you know, I am going to, uh, because, you know, right now, this lot line for Lot A is going to be right up in the 25-foot buffer line. Lot B is going to own the 25-foot buffer line, and Lot C will own the 25-foot buffer line, because I have to maintain 25-foot buffer as part of the cluster requirement on the outskirts of the project. So, I mean, yeah, that's fine, I mean, it's just, it's just hard to do the cluster subdivision. So Lot A is really 31,000 square feet, Lot B is 35,000 square feet, and Lot C is 30,000 square feet off to the 25-foot side. Again, road flush, you know, is 200 feet, um, you know, on a cul-de-sac, it's actually 75 feet, so I have, uh, I have 50 feet here, and I have 65, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I have 51 feet here, and I have 196 feet here, which is probably wrong, but hang on. So, I guess for the front of your plan, the cluster subdivision is how many, so you have the front of your subdivision, right? So. So we are going to be proceeding with the cluster subdivision, I just wanted to see if that was absolutely mandatory, because I could invite some of the lots and make them one acre each, uh, and not just cluster. Having said that, I know that Tim mentioned in the cluster subdivision that normally its requirement is, they will have nitrate studies included in the project.
Well, you just answered yourself, it's tough to give sentences in a well, so. Lot the size.
Right, so, you know, we'll have to let you do that by the requirements. But what could have made lots one acre inside then not trusted, which really would look at home to the same plan, but. So, um, I guess we're looking for some sort of comment from the board, see if they're okay with the application, they did the denser requirements. You know, that'd be our one. Slightly majority in our one, a little area in our four zone.
Yeah.
So in our four zone, I get like 0.09 units. You know, in our one zone, I can get 3.45 units. You know, you just take the total area of the posse, take away the wetlands from the posse, take away those, I planned to, take away the right-of-way from the posse. I planned the other 180,000 square feet, divide that by the density of, you know, for one acre, and then I come to 3.45 lots. So, give me the density requirements, um, and, um, I think we're going to be the DPD requirement as far as getting the wetland filled for me, I don't see a problem with that. And I guess I'll stop there and answer any questions that the board might have.
There's still the requirement in there for open space?
There is a requirement for open space, that 25-foot buffer will be an open area, so that people can actually use that, that'll be in common with the association. There will be open space in here, there will be some open space, obviously, throughout here. And obviously, open space on this area, it was stopped land, so open space here. Not a lot of, uh, usable open space, because again, it's, it's on-site, right?
Is that open space for whatever books?
For kind of set site, a good open space plan.
Well, what, you were talking about the possibility of doing one-acre lots. What, how different would this, what would have had one-acre lots?
Well, if I had one-acre lots, I'd have to meet the, uh, front of your plan on the cul-de-sac of 75 feet, which, you know, I, I think I got 51 here, and I probably have 50. So I'd have to, I can move this mine out now with the wetland edge. I can get a little more frontage here, I can readjust this lot line over, get a little more frontage here, so I can obtain the frontage required on the cul-de-sac and the frontage required. Then when I extend this lot line, it actually comes part of the edge of the wetland, extend it out to the rear property line. I could get, I actually have over three acres of good operating area in here to do my calculations, so I can get three one-acre lots.
So practically the same plan.
It'll be practically the same plan. I don't think it would be that, it's a great subject.
With the, the cluster, you're actually required to have less than, than one acre. Is what is what happened?
That's right.
I think you're already there. Which, which one, well, which one makes more sense, since it's so.
I guess the issue is if I have to cluster, then I.
But does it make more sense, just forget the, the ordinance for the minute.
Okay.
Does it make more sense to do one acre than sub-one acre, or does it really matter what you're running around doing?
Pros and cons?
I tell you, the comment is, if I can have this, is for a regular subdivision, one acre lot size, doesn't trigger nitrate studies, which I'm, I'm sure there's been an issue with nitrate studies. I mean, all the times I've ever seen this happen, as far as lots of plumes, or septic. I've never seen a problem where it really travels on that piece of property, so if I had the one acre lot size, it would trigger that. Wouldn't trigger, and I think that's probably the biggest thing, you know? That's right, exactly right. But it wouldn't be mandatory, that's right. Um, so.
So even practically, there's not much difference?
Not much, except I guess you wouldn't have open space, uh, or any open space land, it would be owned by the lots, you know? This lot now would probably own this entire area, right? You know, and this lot would probably own this entire area, and it wouldn't be an open space plan.
There's so little of it anyway.
Not very practical, I know in Saco, you know, they're open space, they have 20 acres. But they'll look at sites if it's less than 20 acres, or they even turn to, we'll take a fee instead of open space land. Sometimes an open space land isn't very viable, so they'll say, instead of you having open space, we want you to give us a fee. They take that fee, and they'll apply it to ball fields or other places that make sense to have the open space, or put a ball field somewhere. So it's not very usable open space, that's all. I don't think it matters to us either way for the management, because one of them happens.
You indicated that there were two lots that were created on September 8th of 2014.
That's when the deed was recorded.
And now.
Correct. It's not done in 2009.
Can you help me to understand how those two lots being created nine months ago, and then, and putting in another three lots does not violate the five-year subdivision? I'm missing something, I know I am.
Say that again. There's a subdivision.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out those.
Creating those two, creating the subdivision, what you're saying, because you ended up with three lots, those two and one other, and you're on the record.
I didn't really do the, the original survey plaque. My understanding is, state law says if you have a residence, you, I think that's the law, you was using, then you're five years, you're allowed to carve two lots out. So, this residence, so was the, the entire posse, and he was allowed, we had some lawyer, still there, to carve out this lot and then the remaining land. So carved out two lots out of the posse. And this was. Were the original, and carved out two, however you want to look at it. Were the original, carved out two, right? Because he created that one, and by creating this one, he created the remaining land, right?
I'm confused.
Me too.
How long have you lived in the, in the house? And I know it's more than, than nine months.
Yeah, like 17 years.
Is it all one piece of land?
Originally.
Until when?
You sold off the piece in the front.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, okay, that was, that was, that was in 2009, he sold that piece, so that's gone past the five-year period. Because, you know, obviously it was September 1st, 2009, you got September 18th, 2014. More than five years, but like, the lawyer figured it out, 17 days, right? And that's the exact deed that I picked up in the registry, and that's when he recorded, so. Five years, somebody was watching that very closely, I don't know who was Peter or the lawyer. Watching that very closely.
So that's the second one. 2004, how about this third?
Okay, so, so right now, this was, this doesn't count, Peter owns all the property.
But the five-year period, the five-year period is that, right? Oh, he still owns.
This is gone, because it's been more than five years, don't count it.
Okay, I thought you said there were two lots there that were sold.
Yes, well, yeah, he conveyed these two, and he kept the remaining land.
Why'd you make him, you grabbed it one lot, and then the house was another, why'd you make it two lots?
My shop's on one.
Yeah, but it was originally all one.
Correct.
Just the house and the garage.
So later on, when I retire, I can separate that, my shop, add another lot. Some landscaper or someone to buy it, because it's almost three acres.
I was just, yeah, I didn't understand why that's like, you know?
Just figured, so it's more down the road. But we're considering the subdivision of five lots.
It's still, it's still five lots.
Because your real one, your real one exists in.
Yeah, you have to count the, the lots, if they just replace, uh, you.
Nine months ago.
Nine months ago. So you've got to include it, because they're less than five years, so Lot 1 and Lot 2, okay? So now if you certify any more of this Lot 3, you've got to trigger subdivision.
So you've got five lots.
So if you'd have done, if you'd have done like, two lots, you would trigger subdivision. You've got to count the previous ones. If you just carve all one lot, and leave it alone, and you can sort all one lot, and that one you've been handling with. And then you create the second lot, and this one now.
I think we're confused, I didn't, I didn't know, know rule where you can create two lots.
Yeah, the stat, state statutes say that if you own, live in a piece of property for more than five years, you're allowed to get two splits every five years. You've got to be.
One, one.
One split every year.
Two, if you're residing on a piece of property. I don't know why, but you know, when you do that. Part of state law says that you have to hold it. The state law says you're allowed to do two kinds of that one.
So I've always known about one.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I've waited five years.
I've done this a few times on other projects, farms, discussing farms. That's pretty much the way it is. The farmer that has 100, you can't leave, you can't leave the farm, the farm that has 100 acres, has been living there, every five years, you get two. Wait another five years, you get two more. Another five years, two more.
Well, I think it's a cut that creates two lots. You know, it's about two new lots. 99, 99, is that sure of that one?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I got it.
The definition of subdivision is.
I've got 75 in Arizona.
So the definition of subdivision is a division of, of a parcel of land into three or more lots within a five-year period. So he's done. So he's done, the, the two thousand and nine lot, it had an equation. It was outside of five year period. He did...
He did three lots last year.
With the remaining open space.
Yep, he created three lots last year, so we should have seen it last year.
But unless there's an exemption for the, the piece of, piece of the, where his house is.
I think there was an exemption, wasn't there?
Yeah.
Didn't you have an exemption, you gave it to... I thought there was an exemption, yeah, you gave it to him.
I think the address stated it to me, because I'm no wife.
Exactly, so that's where the exemption was. So it was a subdivision, but the exemption, it was an exempted lot.
Because it's due to a family.
State, that's what you used?
I knew there was, I knew there was something that I was trying to go along with the same.
I thought it did, you're like, five years.
You use that and, and, and the relative exemption.
And the only thing, with that relative exemption, I'm not far, but I think you have to hold on to the five year period.
Or you go through, or you go through...
If you have an exempted lot, I'm good.
Of course, he's not gonna give Peter the, the house. He can have the garage.
I do family law for a living, so...
So, all right, so that's what Dan did. Five years and seven years after that one was sold, basically.
Well, that, that answers my question, because I was trying to figure out how to do that.
But the risk is, the risk of the exemption, when you have two lots, if you reside on the block.
I did not know that.
Bring it in next time.
Yeah, I'd really like to see it.
Because guess what? It would have kind of applied to Parker even beforehand, if he wanted it to.
But, but he's not your client, so it's not a problem.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Oh, I agree, I'd really like to see it.
I did project in there, it was a farm, and of course, the lawyer reviewed it, our lawyer reviewed it, you know, buyer lawyer reviewed it, and...
But what I can, from, from my experience in this, is that this, this topic has specifically been going through a lot of debate. Debate is differently interpreted in different towns. In that the two lots are considered two lots and the remaining land is not considered a lot in a lot of people's interpretation. Just tell me what I know.
Okay.
That's true, and it, and it goes the opposite where you say your real lot is a lot.
Is a lot, and that same thing would, would trigger subdivision by a lot of code enforcement. So it's, it's unfortunately not a, has not been a, a black and white issue.
Legislature has made it more confusing.
Of course they have.
It's sort of like...
What do you want, that's government, bro?
All right, well, let's, let's move on to, what's the next step?
The next step?
Yes.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to set up a sidewalk at some point.
First, we have to...
You remember us walk...
Which time?
Yeah, we walked it, what, twice?
I, I did once, yeah.
We did once, we walked it twice.
I walked it at least twice.
Yeah.
Well, we have board members who...
What happened is John, who I think was running that for us, he passed away.
That was two years ago.
Yeah.
That's been since I was on the board.
Pete, I snowmobiled at the Zaca.
Right, yeah, or in finance, well, fine. That's when it started, we started just three years ago.
Yeah, Keith Virgie took me out to his house one year.
Is that a public here? Is this application...
It's a free app. This is a free app.
It's a free app, okay. So, okay, we still have to accept the free app, right? So by whom we accept the free application, as will then depend as discussed, okay?
Well, it's like a...
Motion's been made in second to accept the free application. Discussion.
I need help knowing difference between the pre-app and pre-able. Pre-app, there's seeds, a lot full of there. So this will eventually need to come over.
What, what you wanna do in this situation is, you're required, the only thing you're required to do is have the sidewalk. But what you're doing here is you're, you're going over the concept. We go out, we take a look at this, we look at this in the field, we go over the concept of the cluster. Whether this works, whether you want something else, that's what we do. There's a different design than we had in the last.
And we've done that twice.
Yeah, we have six houses on it.
Yeah.
I mean, you start going out there, you see something new.
So how come, how come Phil's, we didn't have to accept that as a pre-app? Because he didn't submit us a pre-app.
You don't have to do a pre-app.
They come in, they...
They didn't come in to get guidance from the board. They're asking, looking for guidance.
Or they spend a lot of time on Paul. They come in, make sure we get a buying in on the general idea of the subdivision.
They're trying to do the engineering. He hasn't got any engineering on this, just hardly. Thank you.
How much further down is the, the road going in from where it was before?
To most of it. Actually, I think it's less.
It's closer than before.
I think when John had it, I actually checked it, and it came close a little this way. But he had six lots in hand.
He did, I remember.
And Paul went over, and this, this didn't make any sense, it was too much, and too much of a cluster, and one lot's big.
The only, the only thing I would say, going out there, please mark where the things are. The two times I have been out there, we've had difficulty finding pins for corners. We didn't know where property lines were, we didn't know where the roads were. We had an idea of where the road was out to the street. We're not gonna spend our time again.
How's John?
Going out, I wanna know.
I've already tried the cul-de-sac and the property lines, because I want to make sure when test pits would be located on lots.
Kind of center lines, and then we can actually get site distances and all the rest.
This is actually pretty easy to walk it, because of the open end, but I can, oh, this is very simple to figure out already, because I have my stations on my plan, so I can walk it pretty damn close, but...
Yeah, because what went on around that, we didn't, we had no idea what lot we were on, where. One question also out there, if I remember correctly. Where is that tree? There was a tree that we had a question about site distance.
Not that tree, that's true.
That's true.
Out by the front road. By, near the front road, the site distance, we didn't... From the other, from the other driveway. I just, I think it was down towards wherever that road was now. Is there, is there a little bit of a curve up there?
Now, what kind of, you can see?
You got a good memory.
Yeah, very good memory.
I figured about that, I knew what you're talking, I wondered about that. And that road was here. It was like a tree.
And there was a tree that was. But we, we didn't know where the, where we could see. Right, because there was something there, because I thought your lot was square, didn't you have to do a cutout like that, there? Because I thought the tree was on somebody else's property.
Right, because he's only got a lot.
We'll look at it.
Let's, I, we've got a motion, and we've had a second to accept this as a free app.
You gotta ask the, ask me if they're satisfied with our review. They're asked for our opinion, but all of it.
Well, yeah, we usually run that after we've got the site.
Well, I don't know. It includes a general, like, town, but the general consent, we think, to do all of the factors, both the legal requirements and the plan. If we can get out there and verify things like site distances. Some of the soils that we, I don't know if it came across with the board. Almost always asked for the ground board assessment. So I haven't, later on, I haven't been accepted, I haven't said that, the discretion, but generally, I suppose.
That's what your sidewalk is, is it weight boots or what boots did I...
All was in favor.
Okay.
And we closed. Now we need to schedule a sidewalk, can't be on the same, can't be on the eleventh. Twenty-fifth is the earliest we can get out there.
Well, that's if you hold it on.
We could hold it on another night.
Is there any real plans to move forward?
How fast?
Yeah, I mean, if there's no real plans, we can postpone it, maybe plenty of time to mark it off and the rest. But if you're really looking to try to get started, get that. Have you told that before? I know that's...
Told that before?
I, I have, I mean, John, I lost a couple of years there with him. I paid him money.
I'm not this fair to anybody, I'm just asking what your plan though.
I was hoping to get that rolling in this summer.
Oh, as far as marketing, I'm sorry.
You've got it all separate, all right?
I'll be ready for when I live.
I'm not great with any day, yeah. Do you have the twenty-fifth?
I'm not gonna be available a week after, what is it, the eleventh? So like, a week after fifteenth?
We don't have a meeting that week.
Not, but just in case somebody was looking to schedule one.
That looks like my first, probably, first thing I'd do.
So make that motion? So we do five o'clock?
What?
Five o'clock on the eleventh.
No.
No. Just, just because you're on vacation all summer, it doesn't mean, some of us have to work.
If I remember correctly, there's just as many mosquitoes on that lot as on Phil's, and we don't have that much blood to give.
Yeah. No, actually, Phil's is, uh, less, because it's not so hot in there.
So the twenty-fifth?
Six o'clock?
Twenty-fifth at six o'clock, somebody make a motion.
I'm making a motion for sidewalk on June twenty-fifth at six o'clock.
Second, motion's been made in second for sidewalk, June twenty-fifth at six P M. All is in favor. All right, thank you. Motion to announce. Plan is reported.
Can I just put a question?
Thank you.
You're not supposed to have a word. We only get a little, little...
Wait, wait, wait.
Are we gonna have a report? Nothing to report, except the document, they've accepted our, have posted the warrant, show the, um... This way for, uh, word for the, uh, town meeting. So we're all squared away on that, but yet we do. And, uh, I would recommend that everybody come on out Wednesday night to, uh, to spend our, uh... Because we have fourteen, yeah. We have what, we have fourteen warrants. Which, we're up early.
Are they going, are they listing them as fourteen, or are they listing one of the ways you had?
Are they listed eighteen? Listing them as they were submitted by this plan. Are they eighteen or fourteen?
I think there's fourteen, I'm just curious, because I know the public carries a group of nothing for free.
They're all the exact same way they're living. Point of interest? Point of interest?
Yep.
You lost another business in the Rondo?
Which one?
Enterprise, John. No, they moved better. Yeah, they moved down to, uh, Betterment, right? John Postchay's that.
Why four?
All right, so thank you. Oh, no.
I, I, I just thought you might have an idea.
No, I guess I was gone, yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, Enterprise is, it's one of those places, it's, you're located on Route one in the Rondo. There's nothing around here that would cause you to rent a car.
Yes, yeah, yes. They, they, let's put it this way, they used to run out of cars there, didn't they?
I used to have a lot.
Because the fact is, if, if, uh, yeah, they, they run out of cars. They even turn, I used to have to have Saco to bring cars out.
See, because I know in, in York, if, if I take my car to a dealership, that dealership doesn't give me a loan a car. I don't go back to that deal. That's part of, part of the reason why I buy cars where I do. I bring it in for service, I get a loan a car.
Anything else?
There is nothing else to report. Um, Jack, uh, Jack's net last day is tomorrow. And he will be moving on, he has been appointed as the permanent superintendent of the Andover School System. Doing, putting in forty-five days a year. But we really thank Jack, Jack was a great interim manager, he did a lot of good things. Let's see, uh, in terms of, he will still be around, he's going to, he will be around for the, uh, as a resource to keep, will be starting on Monday. Uh, so we have a new town manager Monday, and there'll be a meeting, there'll be a meeting with the selectmen that evening. Other things that we have to report, uh...
When does new town manager start training?
He starts training Monday.
What's his name, Keith?
Keith Trefton.
What?
Trefton, yeah. Keith T., Mr. T., remember him, Mr. T. Trefton. And, uh, so he, he's gonna be starting with a, immediately a, uh, council meeting, a superintendent. And, um, Jack will, will be available and come in on an as needed basis, rather than giving a big spore for two hours on all the things that need to be done, and he's gonna be on an on-call basis. So Jack will still be around. And he did a great job, Mr. Trefton. But, you know, Keith's got a lot of things on his plate. Uh, any other planning things? No, we have, you'll wanna know where we stand on some of the FOIs, FOAs, that you also brought to the panel.
English.
Freedom of information demands that, those requests, I believe, I think almost all have been fulfilled, and several have been picked up.
All right, you were supposed to mail us out, to email back to you, you never got it.
I'm waiting, which issue?
FO, FOA or FOE's or anything?
All the FOs were...
That was two weeks ago, whenever you were supposed to...
I think all the, that was, that was in regards to contact with federal, uh, state or, uh, state agencies. I don't believe any of them here said they had any contact with any state agency. That was regarding D P and Department of Agriculture.
I never sent you anything, but I never got anything.
Nobody, no, you folks indicated that nobody had had any contact. So that was the last one that we've gotten so far. So that's why you haven't got anything more, because we know there was no, no contact between the board, uh, members. And we certainly, I know I had no contact with you folks in regards to that, I had nothing on my computer, I gave nothing either. So, um, that, that made, made half FOA and nothing. There's been no other ones that have been submitted, except, you know, in addition to the ones that you guys have ordered to see, so, um... What has been, what has been, um, requested, we have provided in relation on. What we have, in many cases, we have very little.
Any other things to talk about?
So, chug along, we'll have another drawdown, the, uh, second week of next, next month.
They'll do a great.
Okay. And that's all I've got right now.
Point of information. Blue Moon, formerly Maggie's or wherever else that.
Yep.
They're going to be supposedly future restaurants again.
Yep.
Are you, you asked me to find things tonight?
Yeah.
Nobody else knows anything, so might as well.
Oh, they've been working, they have, they've had permits for a while, we've been looking at it for a while now. They have, it's a permitted use. They have more than enough parking for the number of seats they're gonna be having, it's not gonna be coming to you guys. Uh, they're not even coming to staff, because they, they have no need to. They've got all the stuff they need there. It all depends on, on what their factors, I mean, they've got, their, their program is still, and it may expand with time. They may be, they may be coming to you at some point if they have... Maybe, maybe, they may be coming to you at some point if they have, uh, an expansion of the program, there requires more parking. Parking's been probably an issue, uh, but they have a lot of parking in town.
Around the building.
Well, around the building is an issue. That's going to be an issue. Because that's where the, may or may not be a part of the settlement.
All right. Who would you adjourn?
I would ask everybody to be here on the eleventh. We're going to have two rather important meetings to deal with. The first one is bias and the second one, we need to determine the completeness of an application.
Okay.
I think naturally you're good, but you're...
Our good neighbor, and this must have died. I didn't sign it.